We made it clear that the goal in August is that all students will return to in-person learning 100%, right? So that was March 18. So these are the county COVID metrics. I will tell you that today's metrics came out and it is slightly less adjusted rate. So we went down slightly in adjusted rate. It's not on this chart, but I wanted to give you that new information. The positivity rate remained the same this week and the health equity rate went down as well. So we're still well within the orange tier and that would have fit the orange tier before they changed it as well.
Can we work on the sound? It's not being heard right now.
It's working, they said.
It's working?
I can hear it.
Okay.
Yeah. That's why I paused for them to give me the okay it was working. So that's the metrics. Again, today's metrics are even a little bit better. We are definitely within the orange tier. We remain there for two weeks in a row. I also want to refresh your memory from July of 2020. So when we made the recommendation in July of continuing in distance learning, this was the part of that presentation. So in phase one of reopening, kids would stay in distance learning when we're in purple and they have, right? Obviously. And then when we hit the orange tier, that we would look into putting in a hybrid model. So we are now currently in the orange tier, so it makes sense that we're having this conversation now. And so the orange tier at that time was defined as moderate restrictions. Okay? So that was back in July of 2020. And the terminology has changed over the course of this pandemic from the state all the way through the local level. So you recall not too far after July, August, we were on the watch list, right? So the county was on what the state called the watch list because of our significant increases in rates. Again, in July of that year though, we did present and approve this phase in model. Again, the green at the time, phase three was when we got to low, very low restrictions, we would move to full in-person learning. So the timing of change today. So these are just some basic concepts. So our county has moved to the moderate tier now, which is the orange tier. One quarter of our academic school year is still available for a hybrid learning model. So we are on an accelerated model this year with block scheduling. So five weeks actually is equivalent to a full quarter of the school year. The phased-in plan that I just showed you from back in July did call for us moving to hybrid when we hit the orange tier. The block schedule we designed at the time, we created it so we had the ability to move in and out of a hybrid model if that became possible. We've now approved our COVID safety plan. You did that back in February. Vaccines have been offered to all staff. Not all staff have received a vaccine and not all staff will. But we've made a conscientious effort to offer to all of our staff, all of the different clinics that have been available in the city and in other counties as well. We've been very honored to collaborate with Santa Cruz County Superintendent of Schools as well, and they've offered vaccines to our staff who live in the county and who don't live in the county. So we've been able to take advantage of every opportunity to offer vaccines to staff. Vaccines are soon to be offered to 16 and over. So for those that have been watching the news, we are partnering with All In, which is a nonprofit out of Monterey that's been providing resources for students and families all throughout the pandemic. They are now collaborating with the Tivitad Medical Center and they're going to offer the first opportunity for students over the age of 16 to get vaccinated. And we will be hosting that this Thursday at North Salinas High School. So that information is going out. It went out today through social media outlets and we'll be hitting, getting that out to our families as well. Phasing in with a hybrid learning model now will provide experiences necessary to move to full in-person in the summer intercession as well as into August. So the timing of this allows us to gain experience with students and staff in the buildings so that we can learn from those things we do well and those things that are areas of growth. So this is the middle school hybrid model that we're bringing to you. And the middle school model and the high school model are slightly different. And the reason they're slightly different is they take into account the need for transportation and for food distribution of meals. So those are different than in normal days, right? So we're not able to put two students on every seat in the bus to transport all of our students. So it will take a larger effort to get our students to school. And so we are adjusting the middle school and high school schedules so that the models are flipped around a little bit where middle school, the students will start the day in advisory, in distance learning. And then they will move to the, when they get to period two on this chart, which is under the blue first shading there where it says cleaning and passing period, the kids will come in who are in cohort A. That group of kids will come for in-person instruction on Tuesday and Wednesday. So they'll come two days in a row. If they're in cohort B and C, they will be doing distance learning during that time. And then we will have a passing period. It'll be a little bit more extended of a passing period than what we normally have, which will give us some flexibility in releasing students at different times so they can use restrooms at different times and we don't over-impact the school site at a given time. And so the passing periods are a little longer. Then the students would go to their fourth period class. And same as the above, so cohort A is in school Tuesday and Wednesday. Cohort B would be in school Thursday, Friday. And the other, cohort C is the cohort of students who elect to remain in distance learning fully. So they will be able to get served the same as those students coming to school. So then at the end of their sixth period class, so what I want you to know is that the students are not going to one room and they're not staying there all day. They're going to all three of their classes, so they're rotating from teacher to teacher to teacher. And so at the end of their session, there will be a grab and go lunch and then there'll be intervention in the afternoon, but during the grab and go lunch, the students will go home.
Does this say middle school is supposed to lunch?
No, that's middle school.
Is it that?
Yeah, that's middle school. We're doing a...
Okay. Okay. So any questions about that model yet?
President Tabaro?
Yes, ma'am.
My question is, how long is the passing period? Because we don't have times on here.
Right. So we're still working out all the times to make sure it works with busing and meal distribution. Passing periods will be 20 minutes.
Okay. And the intervention for the distant learning groups, the last area, is that by distant learning or at the site?
Distance learning.
Okay. So if I'm on group, if I'm on cohort A, I will go home after my lunch and I can get on my laptop and then connect with my teacher for any intervention that I may need?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Couple questions. I need to, so it says that advisory in the morning is every day, but what I'm seeing is that advisor, or maybe that's just, the advisory at the top is just a blanket. I thought it was applied, it was attached to the cohorts underneath. It's not.
It's not.
Got it.
Correct.
And then the cohort C, the distance line only cohort, will be participating concurrently online during both cohorts A and B simultaneously, right? When I'm, I'm going to use Patty's example, if I'm cohort A and it's Thursday, Friday, I'm also participating concurrently, simultaneously, and then vice versa. So everybody's in class all at the same time, some are online and some are in person. Right?
Yes.
I'm making sure.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay. That makes sense.
No one else? Okay.
So thank you, Mr. Burns. I will continue with the presentation. And so moving to the high school schedule, you will notice that the start and end times are also not here yet. But just to give everyone an idea, high schools will start around 8:00 a.m. and students will be going home about 1:15 or so. The students in high school will start with their second period class. So there was no changes to the high school schedule as it stands right now, other than the start or end time. Similarly to the middle school schedule, we'll have 20-minute passing periods, but really it's 10 minutes to allow for students to clean and disinfect their spaces and then really 10 minutes to walk to their next class. So that we limit the number of minutes that students are out together. And then they go to fourth period, another passing period. This will be a time also when students will get a snack so that they have a snack that they may choose to have if they would like to before they go on to their sixth period class. And they would have that snack in the classroom and it would be a quick snack, not very long. We have all of the, we'll have garbage bins outdoors, so as soon as they walk out, they can throw out their garbage after they've cleaned and disinfected. They go on to sixth period and then they'll have another passing period and then they will end their day with advisory. After advisory, they will grab their lunch and go home. Similarly to the middle school students, they will have time to then go home and participate in distance learning if they need to.
President Tabaro?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. We'll start.
Dr. Blanca Balta-Sar, can you please explain again the cleaning and passing period? You said it's 20 minutes. 10 minutes was for one thing and then 10 minutes was for the other thing. Can you explain that again?
Yes. So we want to ensure that students have all of the instructional minutes that are required. So once the instructional minutes are over, students will have a, there'll be a 20-minute gap between the end of the instructional minutes in their second period class and the beginning of instructional minutes in their fourth period class. In those 20 minutes, 10 minutes will be spent with the students cleaning, wiping, disinfecting their desk area, the plexiglass, their chairs, and then getting ready to move on to their next class.
Okay. Just to repeat what you said, students will be the ones cleaning their area?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Yes, sir.
Okay. You say that this would be in-person and it would start about 8:00 and finish about 1 something?
Yes.
Their day? So for example, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, I see that cohort A starts and then you say they finish with advisory, but for example, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, I only see advisory, cohort B and C. What happens to cohort A?
So cohort A is in-person and cohort B and C are in distance learning.
Oh, you'll do both of them at the same time, B and C and distance learning?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. And then lunch yet? So lunch, they'll be grabbing lunch like a 1 something?
Can you repeat, please?
You said that what, after everything's over, like a 1 something, and then after that's when they grab lunch. So lunch, technically they'll be getting it like around...
1:15.
1:15, okay.
Around that time. We're still working out the times, but approximately.
And is this open for all the grades?
Yes, for all students.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Dr. Balta-Sar Sabat. What is the scenario that will be used to bring the students in and exiting the school?
Yes, we'll, we have, it's later in the slides if you'd like to wait till I get there and I can answer that question.
Okay. And the second question and last will be, when it says changes, you know, the, I can see that there will be different changes where the kids leave the school and that will be due for the lack of buses that we provide to?
So typically we, yeah, due to transportation and the routes, we stagger the start times for middle and high schools. And so high schools are typically, maybe Ms. Aguión can answer this question better than I can, but typically some schools start at 8:00, others start at 8:10, others start at 8:05, right? It just depends on the transportation routes. And later you'll see why we're waiting for the survey results to be able to have a better indication of whether or not we're going to have to stagger high school or we can have the same high school schedule and the same middle school. But we definitely know that the start time for high school and middle school is about an hour difference. So middle schools will start about 9:00 in the morning where high schools will start about 8 o'clock in the morning.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Two quick questions just to follow up on that. Because advisory for middle school will be in DL in the morning before the start time is what is my understanding, will the middle school day, it's going to start later, will it end later or will it end about the same time or will it end earlier? Do we know yet?
So actually, a new update, a middle school advisory will be in-person because it will be in-person.
Okay.
And so they'll start about 9:00 a.m. at school.
Okay, got it. So then, so if they're starting at 9:00, are they then ending more like 2:00?
They will end around 2:00. That is correct.
Okay. And then just to follow up on the lunch time, is it possible to, you mentioned the snack between fourth and sixth period. Is it possible for us to provide even like granola bar? I'm just worried about kids not eating potentially anything in the morning and then not getting lunch till after 1:00?
We will be providing it.
Okay. Excellent. Great. Thank you.
Just wondering, how is learning concurrently going to work?
Can you please repeat?
Yeah, I was just kind of wondering, how is learning concurrently going to be working?
Good question. We're going to figure it out. So this is all new for all of us and so the plan is that students will be in front of their teachers. The teachers will be teaching to the students while at the same time their camera is going to be on so that students at home can log into their Google Classroom and are able to participate and listen to the teacher teaching. And so that's how it works concurrently. We have not done it in our district. However, many schools have, many teachers have been doing this and there's a lot that we've learned from others and we will, we're going to try our best, right? And the goal is that we're educating all of our students, whether they decide to come in person or they decide to remain at home, that this provides equity for all of our students.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do you all want to keep going or?
Yeah. Go ahead.
So I want to just update you in terms of what we've done with communication after the special board meeting last Thursday night. We communicated to families via a letter that the principal sent over the weekend, just informing them of the direction that the board asked the administration to take so that they knew that we would be sending out a survey on Monday, which was yesterday. And the survey basically, we're asking if they would like their student to participate in in-person hybrid, in-person instruction. And they've been coming in, so that's what we've done to date, given that we were going to have this meeting today and it's a really quick turnaround time that we expect to bring in students next week. So we felt like we needed to get something out to the families as soon as possible to give them some information. So in terms of instruction, I want to just let you know that, as you know, the guidance changed. We now are required to have three feet distance students from each other. And so the number of students in each class will vary depending on how many fit in the space, right? So some classrooms, there may be 16 students, others there may be 18, others there may be 15, you know? It just depends on the space. PE classes, band and choir will take place outdoor. So physical education activities will take place outdoor. However, if teachers are doing a lesson on nutrition or, you know, more classroom-based, it can be indoors. Mondays will remain asynchronous, so that's what we currently have for all students. Intervention time in the afternoon will continue virtually, which you saw in the schedule. And then students will continue to have extra support if they need it in the afternoon so that they can help, they can continue to complete their assignments and receive help with homework.
Can I ask a question regarding, not that slide, but the one previous to that? Yeah. It says families will have the option to either attend in person or stay with distance learning for the remainder of the school year. And then I guess the question that I had was, do we, I know it's too early to ask because we were, we're still in the process, I guess, of surveying the students or the families to find out if the students are going to be coming back or not. But do you have a sense, a sense of how many students, more or less, might be attending a school or might be attending the at-home virtual learning situation? Do we have an idea? Like, like we think that 30% might come back or, you know, I mean, you know?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we do. We anticipated that question. And so as of 4:00 this afternoon, I can say that of the families that have responded for high school, between 30 and 40% of the families have said that they would like to return in person.
Okay.
Of the families who have responded for middle school, it is about 50%.
Okay.
And it is across the board, across town, across Salinas. It's the same numbers.
So the first set of numbers that you mentioned, the 30 to 40%, I believe it was, do we have an idea of what it is, what the breakdown might be from, by zip code?
It's very similar.
Very similar.
The 30% to 33% is Rancho, Alice, Alvarez and North Salinas. Salinas high was at 40%. And then for middle schools, it was across the board, 50%.
And what, one last one. What percentage might, what does that percentage represent in terms of potential numbers?
So it varies based on the responses that we had at 4:00 today. I would say in our high schools, two of our high schools had about 1,300 responses. So if you take 30% of 1,300...
I'm a social science major. I'm not a math major.
The average is somewhere in 700, 800 range for the larger high schools and the middle school's 500 kids per middle school.
Are you a math major?
I'm a social science major too.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I was going to do the math for you, President Tabaro.
Go ahead, go for it.
So, but yes, it's what Mr. Burns said, right? So depending on how many responded, so we had, middle schools, we had less of a response. So let's just say the average is 400 responses as of today, so 200 would be back. But if we can anticipate that the percentages will be similar, right? And we have 1,000 students at a middle school, so we'll have about 500 on campus. We divide it by two, we'll have about 250 students at middle school on any given day. Now if you take the high schools, right, and you, we say it's the same trend and it's 3,000 students, right? Half of that is 1,500, but we're not, we don't, we're not there yet. So let's say we have 1,000. We get a third, right? So we'll have 500 students on campus on any given day in high school.
Can I ask a follow-up question? If families, if families don't respond, is, do we keep, I mean, do we call, like, how do we make, or do they default to distance learning? I'm just kind of wondering what happens?
They will default to distance learning.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question for you, Dr. Balta-Sar Sabat. And maybe it's not even a question, maybe it's more like a request. But as I see, they were reaching out to every families to turn around their response within three days to make sure, you know, how we're doing in bringing our kids back home. I guess, can, my question to you is, I would like to do, I would like to request to the board or to the administration if it is possible to do a survey to reach out to every student in our district and in order to provide services to those that are, you know, suffering with emotional and physical disorders. I think we have 16,000 kids plus and I would like to see a survey being done to our students. And the reason is sometimes those kids, they don't want to speak up their mind. They're embarrassed, they're afraid, but probably through a survey, it will be easier to reach out to those students. So I'm just thinking, you know, in my mind right now, as we're seeing the survey for families, why don't we do a survey for students? And so we can see the census and the status about how they feel coming back to school and how they're dealing with that emotional distress that we've been hearing a lot through a lot of parents.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Yes, sir.
Once they decide which one they want to do, distance learning versus live, can they change their minds? Like after a week, maybe someone doesn't want to be live, they want to go back to distance learning. Are we going to allow that?
So right now, we're offering choice. So of course, if the student, they say they want to come to participate in person, however, when they realize they come to school and they're, you know, suffering from anxiety or it's uncomfortable, we will honor the fact that they would like to remain in distance learning. We had situations like that within our small cohorts and so we did honor that.
Okay. And then my second question, with your PE and band and choir, them being outside, are you allowing more students in their class or are you sticking with the 16?
So we, PE classes are larger in general, so they will be outside, that's about 21 students if all of them decided to come back. However, given the numbers, I do not anticipate them being that large.
Okay. Anyone else?
So this was explained already, but I'll just reiterate. So cohort A and B students are those who will opt to come back to school. And we are going to do our best to accommodate the days that families request. We asked a question in the survey, which days would be best, Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday or Friday? And the reason for that question, even though we're a large district with 16,500 students, we do realize that we have older students that have younger siblings that are attending school. So as much as possible, we would like to accommodate the families that need that and have requested that. However, we cannot guarantee it because of the classroom space. So cohort A will be on campus on Tuesday and Wednesday. Cohort B will be on campus Thursday and Friday. And then cohort C are all the students who will remain in distance learning. And like I mentioned earlier, those students will be connecting via their Google Classroom, via Google Meets or Zoom, depending on what platform the teacher uses. Additionally, our hope is that we will notify families no later than Tuesday, April 20th, which cohort their students will be so that they can get ready to come back. which cohort their students will be so that they can get ready to come back. So, what will our classrooms look like? This is a very similar setup to what we had for the small cohorts, oops. Except that the difference is now that they will be three feet apart and not six feet apart. We have desks or we have tables and everyone has a Plexiglas. And that's what they currently look like. Students will be required to bring their district-assigned Chromebooks, their chargers, and their headphones. Students' belongings will be separated. And so, if they bring items, we'll separate them. If they, you know, typically, they'll, they can also hang them if they have a backpack on their chair. But we do not want students sharing. So, we will have extra supplies so that everybody can have their own supplies. So, the classroom culture, what's going to change? Like I mentioned earlier, cleaning and disinfecting, students will be responsible for their individual desk areas. So, that includes their, the desk, the Plexiglas, and their seats. The face coverings must be worn the entire time the student is in the classroom, except for when they're going to have their brief snack in between fourth and sixth period. And then, the staff still must maintain six feet from students, their workspace. And although the staff may roam around the classroom, they cannot work with a student for longer than fifteen minutes. So, what are our next steps? We're going to gather the survey data. So, we, the survey closes on Thursday at five P.M. We are also having printed surveys that are being handed out during lunch pickup time so that families who have not been able to access it online are able to access it in print. And we can get those as well. And we will use that data to create our cohorts, balance the classes, and our transportation routes. So, the site principals will communicate the schedules to the families no later than Tuesday, April twentieth. Our plan is to have cohort A come in on Thursday, April twenty-second, and cohort B come in Friday. And the purpose of the orientation day is to go through all the safety and health protocols with the student so that they understand what the expectations are when they're in the classroom so that the teachers are able to begin their transition with just their students that are in person. So, on those two days, all the other students will be doing asynchronous work so that the teachers can transition with the students that are going to be coming in person. And then, the families who opt in will be getting an in-person instruction, health and safety guideline agreement that they will have to initial and sign. And basically, what that agreement is about, it's about the face coverings, it's about the wellness checks and making sure that they really understand what the expectations are as our priority is to ensure that our students and our staff are safe as we return to in-person instruction. And that, I believe, concludes the presentation and we'll entertain any other questions you may have.
Are there any questions?
Yes, sir.
On the first bullet point, gather survey data, is this a surveys that were sent to the students or to the parents?
So, these were sent to, we would like the families to respond, the parent or the guardian. However, they were also sent to the students so that they can help their parents respond. We have found that when we send out surveys, and we have been told by our students that when we send out surveys, we should also send it to them because sometimes their parents may need support in responding. And so, we send it to both, the parents and the students. However, when the responses come back, this has happened to us before, we will get the parent who responds and the student and their different responses. So, then what we do in that case, we call the family directly to find out what the family has decided.
Exactly, that's where I was going, the response would be different from a student and the parent.
Yes.
First, I'm surprised we don't have an entire room full of people today. I'm just, I don't know about any of you, but I am just surprised. With all the letters and everything came out, maybe it's not too late still.
So, Trusted Rubu, you have, this is a closed meeting, so there's no audience here. That's why they're not here.
Even one person, nobody, right?
So, when we get to public comments, I'll address that.
Okay, good. I didn't know if we were spacing them out.
No.
Or what, or what, you know, what it meant here, because I do see some people here, but I just didn't know. Okay, good, all right. Well, you know what, given the current litigation and all the letters we've received and what's happened up in San Francisco, what's happened down in San Diego, is this going to cover some of those issues that are being brought forward? You know, is this taking care of some of those requests that people are making?
Yes. So, the requirements are to offer in-person instruction to the extent possible. A hybrid model meets that requirement. So, we'll address that.
Yes, sir.
The cleaning, Blanca, of the classroom, why are you having it, having the students do it when they leave versus, versus coming in?
What's the question?
I just feel a student, I've been around high school a long time. I just feel a student's going to do a better job of cleaning the area that they're going to be sitting down in, not the one they're leaving. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, it's just really a culture thing, it's not a requirement or a mandate. So, CDC doesn't require you to clean surfaces between students anymore. So, we're doing it as a way to have a preventative measure. And that's why there's that extended time for passing period, so they can do some of that before they move on. So, that's the only reason.
Okay, I can see a lot of students wanting to do it before they sit down.
We'll have supplies available, if they want to do it both, they can do it both as well.
I have a quick question for you. It says that staff workspace must be six feet apart from students. So, my question is, what's the space between every student apart?
Three feet.
Three feet, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, and just to clarify further, that's not a mandate. So, that's a recommendation from the CDC of three feet, but it's not a mandate. So, students can actually be closer, but we're going to continue to follow that recommendation of three feet as we move back into hybrid.
Did you finish the presentation? I'm going to ask one question. Say, for example, all the students come to school. And let's say that, you know, I had read a couple of articles in the last couple of days that were talking about the new variant. I want to say it's from the U.K. And there's a variant that's coming up from South America, I believe it from Brazil. Well, what happens if one of our students tests positive and/or, you know, or comes to school with COVID? What do we do in that school site if we determine that a student comes to us like that?
So, it's a great question. And it's an assumption we need to have that it could happen. So, in your COVID safety plan, which includes your COVID prevention program, it indicates that we will do contact tracing for everybody the student was in contact with. So, if it was in their period two class, all of those students, we would determine what their close contact was. If it was in period four, et cetera. So, we're going to have to mitigate and contact trace for anybody that potentially test positive or was exposed to somebody positive. So, we've been doing that in the workplace already, now we'll do that with students.
And, I mean, that's the classroom, but what about when they go from classroom to classroom and walking in the hallways? What do we do then?
So, you're going to do that, the walking in the hallways piece, so close contact is defined, unless it changed, as being within six feet of another person for fifteen minutes or more in a twenty-four hour period of time. So, just passing each other in the hallways is not going to meet close contact. Being in the classroom, sitting next to each other and working with each other within six feet could potentially meet close contact. So, we would go back and do the contact tracing. So, another element that's not part of this plan, but it's part of COVID mitigation, short and long term, is we'll be putting together a COVID response team for the district that includes positions at every school site focused just on this work in mitigating and contact tracing of COVID. So, there is a potential that through contact tracing, that a student could have exposed other students and you have to close down a group of students. Yes, there is that potential.
You close down a classroom, you close down classrooms, what do you, what do you mean?
So, you would scale up, right, depending on the contact and the exposure? So, if it's one student and there's no other exposure, then we don't need to contact the health department. If there's more than that, we would contact the health department. And through that process, they would let us know what we need to do next. It could be close down that classroom and all the other classrooms the student went to. It could be, if you have more than three cases on your site, closing the whole site down.
Does that mean, does that happen, that communication, do they have to communicate back to us within X amount of hours or X amount of days?
It's pretty, yeah, it's pretty instantaneous. So, we currently have a manager of COVID HR, in our HR department, who has a direct link to the health department. And that would be a pretty instant feedback on what are, what are those next steps.
All right. So, that was it for the presentation? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
To go on, to go on to your question, what happens? Do you just shut down one cohort then? If a kid, if some kids pop positive in A, but B wasn't in, so B still goes?
So, it depends on the close contact, right? So, if I'm in group A in this scenario, then the close contact would be other kids in person with me in group A because I didn't have contact with group B kids. So, the focus would be on those students in close contact with me in person only.
After seeing the whole presentation tonight, I can see that you guys have been working very hard in providing us a great recommendation. And in the other hand, I feel that this will be the beginning of the reopening of our school district with the idea that hopefully, we can really open up full capacity by August. So, I just wanted to commend our administration and our stakeholders for being, you know, helping together to provide, which is a project that will benefit our community, our parents, and our students. And I think this is exactly what I call democracy. Thank you.
I totally agree with you, Trustee Campol. That was a very good presentation. Okay, so, let's go to District Communications, CSCA.
So, they're not present today?
They're not present. SVFT, neither?
Yes, she's present.
I don't know. Oh, yes. Good evening. It's wonderful to see all of you in person. SVFT would like to begin by thanking you all for your leadership and dedication to the Salinas Union High School District. You have chosen to serve when others wouldn't or didn't. And you've done so by being thoughtful and working together to find solutions, especially this year. Next, SVFT would like to state publicly that the negative reflection of our union, our teachers, our school board, and our district on social media and through public comment has only divided us as a community at a time when we should be united. As has been stated previously by many board members and the public, none of us has ever lived through a challenging time such as this. And the expectation that there is a manual on how to adjust to the state and CDC's ever-changing guidance is simply misguided. And through it all, your employees, your teachers, your counselors, your social workers, your coaches, your classified staff, and your administrators have worked tirelessly to meet the diverse needs of our students, and we thank you. The challenges are ongoing. The federal government has made the requirement of mandated state testing an absolute quagmire for districts. Though the federal government states that the mandated assessments won't be held against districts, students still may be required to take these assessments either remotely or in person. There are so many challenges facing educators that the public may not be aware of. But that is our collective job, and we appreciate your trust. The development of the hybrid model is a task that has been ongoing since the summer of 2020. Meeting the needs of all families is one of the priorities the district has maintained throughout the planning process. We can disagree about many things because there are many opinions and philosophies about what might be best for one subgroup or another. However, we are one district. We are one community. And what a rich one, rich one it is and how fortunate we all are to live in Salinas. As we move forward, SVFT asks the board and cabinet and community to support your educators and students by framing this hybrid model as additive and positive. We can all make a choice to look at what is missing or we can focus on what is gained each and every day. In education, the term is a growth mindset. And it means that innovation and collaboration towards improvement is encouraged and fostered. The opposite of a growth mindset is a fixed mindset that spins on negativity. SVFT isn't going to discuss how dedicated educators in this district have been during this time of distance learning in order to reach all students. We all know how hard everyone has been working. Instead, we're looking forward to how we can make hybrid as positive for each student and family. Join us in shifting the rhetoric from a deficit model to one of positivity and growth for all of us. In closing, the board agenda includes a resolution naming the day of the teacher as May fourth. Throughout this pandemic and probably every day of the year is Day of the Teacher. For most of us, if we only just take a moment, we can remember those educators who have helped shape who each of us is. This may have been through a teacher who presented challenging material that developed our intellect or their amusing humor or a gentle nudge when we were struggling. I would like to take this moment to recognize each and every teacher, educator, who is connecting with students and making this time in history, this time in their lives, just a little easier and more interesting. SVFT thanks you for this opportunity to speak tonight in person. Stay safe and healthy. And as we have been, let us all as a district and community unite to make this year end in a positive way for all of our educators, our community, and our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's do board members, but let's start at the far end and work our way this way. How's that?
Sure, sounds, got plan. This week, I was able to witness some of our feeder schools bringing back their students. Very nice how it was done, they had balloons, they had banners. And it was just a very nice presented how that happened. Also, last Friday, thank you to Superintendent Burns who allowed me to be able to witness a football game at RoboBank. It was nice seeing cheerleaders, our band, players, parents enjoying the game. It was very, very nice atmosphere and everyone was very practicing protocols as far as safety and all. and all that stuff. So it was nice to be able to see what people call normalcy. I don't know if that's a word or not, but it was kind of nice to see a lot of smiles in the families' faces and their children and cheering for them. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Well, first I would like to say thank you for anybody who took part in preparing this area for us. I mean, I walked in, I was like, wow, this looks really safe for us. So I want to thank each and every one of you who participated in this. This is really awesome and thank you. I know it takes a lot of work, so I appreciate all of you for putting this together for us. Also, I just want to share that I am super excited. I mean, like, we're talking about kids coming back to our beautiful schools. Like, this is exciting, right? We've been waiting for this moment for a long time. So I'm just really excited that we're now having this conversation, that it's really happening. I mean, it's a really difficult situation because, you know, President Tabarra said, what if something happens? Because that what if is there, is there. But our students want to come back. We see now the data, the survey says the students want to come back. So we need to be prepared for them. And I want to thank the administration and all the staff for putting this together. This presentation was great. All the work that you have done shows, and I just know that this district will be completely prepared for the students. So I'm just really happy. This is a really great moment. I mean, we've been thinking about having this moment for a long time and it's, we're getting a lot closer. We're a lot closer for students to be on our campus. So thank you.
I have no comments tonight.
You're fast.
First of all, I'd like to say it's nice to see every one of you tonight. It's nice to be in an open meeting, or actually closed meeting and eventually open to the public when they come to address the board. It's nice to be alive. I say, I want to say thank you, God, for, you know, providing us with the vaccination and because we are, we are living in a totally new world and we don't know what to expect, but the hope is still there. And, you know, like, someone mentioned a while ago, Hillary Clinton, it takes a village to raise a kid. And this is exactly what we've been doing all along since COVID-19 hit on March 13. We all are trying to find the right puzzle, you know, to shadow, not darkness, but light. And tonight, we are beginning to really put that puzzle together and to make history where all the community stakeholders are happy to see that our trustees as the board and the leadership are finally taking the right direction to open up. And after receiving so many phone calls on 93905, they're ready, I am confident that when this plan comes back to us for an adoption, I am willing to support it, Mr. President. And so just as I'm excited tonight, I've been here, can you imagine, Mr. President, all the kids that are coming back in campus? They're going to be cheerleading. Sí se puede, we can do it. You know what? We're happy. And I can wait to see all these kids finally happy in their parents as well. So I'd like to thank the administration, like I said before, for working together. And even though we adopted different models in the past, I think this is the one that it really is making more sense to our community. And if we were elected, as I said, elected officials, it's not just to do our own decision, but to listen to the input of our community, you know, listen, listen without reacting until the final moment when it comes to. And like Trustee Rubio mentioned many times ago, I'm not up for reelection, but I'm not afraid to be recalled. I'm not afraid to lose my seat because I know that what I'm doing is a good job. And I'll thank myself on my back. Thank you, God. That's all I got to say.
I've just got a couple of things here. So, yeah, I just want to echo what's been said before. I just want to thank everybody that's connected with our system here, with our schools, for what they've done with this trying time. It's just, you know, trying to do everything for everybody, trying to keep everybody safe, making sure our teachers, everybody that's connected, everybody, administration, our non-certificated staff, everybody that's been safe and keeping our kids safe and getting them back to school. And, you know, for all the work that everybody's done here. So I just, I got to thank all of you for that. That's number one, and I'm glad that everybody here is safe. The other thing is last, last Saturday, MCOE had its last All In For Equity presentation, and they had a African-American lady by name of Rosemary Allen. And she, she gave a presentation, the whole, the whole theme of the MCOE presentation was early childhood. And she brought in just some information that really opened my eyes just to myself. She talked about the, I hope I pronounced this right, amygdala, and she thought, talked about its development in, in little kids. And what she said was, was this, and she, she brought herself as an example of this. She said, when, when the, when the baby, you know, is born and the people that are taking care of it, it starts to develop a recognition of color, whether it's white, brown, black, whatever color it is in this world. And it starts to develop that, and it finds that affinity, and it just develops that. So later on in life, when it's looking at other colors, it's not the same. It's, it's maybe not a fear response, but these people, this person that's looking at me doesn't look like me. And it was interesting to see that. She made the point that she had to teach in Colorado. And she said Colorado, in the, in the spot she was at, there was not a lot of African-American people. And she had the problem of discerning people because they were all white and they all had blonde hair and they all had a certain look, and it was hard for her. And she didn't understand that, and, and that was the science behind this. And it just made me think, you know, you know, the saying, you know, there's some, some people you look at and to you, they look all the same. And they look the same because you can't discern because, because that's not what you've seen growing up as, as a child and all of a sudden you're exposed to that. So that was, that was really interesting and it just made, it gave me a lot of thought about that, about, you know, when you're growing up, what you see, you know, in, in my world, you know, a lot of people that are brown. And for other people, it's been other colors wherever they're at in this world. So that, that was good. And it was very eye-opening to me and I hope, I don't know if any of you saw it, I think it, I think they're going to have it on, on, on their site there. Maybe Dan can let us know on that. But it was eye-opening. It was good. And so that was, that was my, my, you know, my eye-opening training there on last Saturday. So that's all I have. So thank you.
Thank you. I want to start also by expressing my appreciation in particular to Superintendent Burns, Dr. Baltasar Sabah, Ms. Aguión and President Basler for their dedication and tireless work and commitment to bringing a hybrid model that, that allows for in-person, live instruction with all three teachers for all of our students if they choose to do that. This is, I finished my second day of in-person teaching today, so I have now seen all six of my in-person cohorts. And I know many people have expressed concern that this isn't enough, or maybe it's too late. And I will tell you from firsthand experience, it is, it is, every moment of in-person is so rewarding. The kids were smiling and laughing and socializing and working hard and learning, and it was, it's fantastic. So this is going to be worth every precious minute, and we're going to give them a whole quarter. So that's, that's, that's fantastic. I did also want to point out, which is just kind of an odd coincidence, it is April 13th, so it is thirteen months to the day that we shut down. So how serendipitous that we just might make the decision tonight to reopen.
I just want to say that, you know, I said it before and I'll say it again, that we have the best staff around, you know, and, and I'll, you know, probably don't say it enough, but I get to sit with the best board members around. We're all different. We all have our, our particular points of view. We all have our experiences. We have our, some of us have, I don't want to say children because I don't have, they would probably get upset, but our kids have all attended our schools. I attended our schools. A lot of us on this board have attended our schools. And we have a particular, I think, point of view regarding the high school district. And I think that, you know, we bring our experience together and try to do the best for everyone. Now, last time we were here, not here physically, but the last time we met as a board, we, we had approved a set of recommendations for, we had based, we made the decision based on some recommendations from the state and from the county and from the Department of the Vet. And I think, I think a lot of us do our due diligence and try to come up with, make the best decision possible. But, you know, from the last time we met as a board to right now, to today, those recommendations changed. And, and I don't think a lot of people understand or know that, you know, in this situation, this new learning situation, things tend to change real quickly. And you, you, you kind of have to be flexible enough to, to deal with that, that type of deal. And so, you know, I, I believe that, I believe that our board, it's not my board, it's our board, because we all live in this town. It's our city. We, we, we are going to make a decision tonight that's going to affect all young people in, in this town. And I think it's going to be a good decision and it's going to be based on good information and not some hearsay out there, out there on the, on the internet, you know? And so I just want to tell our staff and the board, I'm very proud to serve with all of you, okay? Because I know that we're going to do the right thing tonight, okay? So that's all I got to say. Mr. Superintendent, would you like to make some comments?
Sure do.
All right.
So just piggybacking on Trustee Padilla Salzberg, I also want to thank Beatrice Smith behind me for putting in the time with Marcos Cabrera to get this all set up, do the best we can to provide a space for us to be back in person, to see each other and to meet in the public forum, once again, as, as we've done for so, so many years. I have a few announcements as well. I wanted to let the board know of some exciting things that are happening in the district. So we are a huge operation and the beat keeps drumming. No matter what happens in social media world, the beat keeps drumming. We had sixty of our parents participate in the California Association of Bilingual Education Conference, also known as CAVE. Right? So our community liaison-supported parents helped them navigate and get access to a virtual conference this year. It was a collaborative effort between our special projects office, the migrant ed program, and helped create access to a new and diverse group of district-wide parents. So thank you for them providing that opportunity. And thank you to the parents who really went out of their way to, one, make the time to learn more, as well as to learn how to use this virtual environment that unfortunately we've gotten too used to. So as well, in addition to that, our Salinas Adult School reported that they've had a very successful cooking class virtually, and that students, adult students, were learning unique recipes in vegetarian cooking. And so maybe we'll get them to come cook for us one day. And if you're a meat eater, we'll figure that out, too. I think they have plant-based food that tastes like meat these days, so maybe they can figure that out as well. I also wanted to let you know that we already have 120 students that have graduated. So while people are talking about the glass half-full and kids aren't successful, 120 students have already earned their diplomas this school year, of 59 of those from Mount Toro High School, 62 from El Puente. So congratulations to those students, their parents, the staff at El Puente and at Mount Toro for supporting students to get them through graduation requirements under these, you know, very challenging times. This, this is usually the exciting time of the year when students or seniors are starting to find out about university and college admissions or getting their letters and eagerly waiting to open them until they feel like they're in good karma. And so we, I wanted to report to you that our students have been very resilient through this process as well. I'm proud of their work, proud of the work of their counseling and support staff for getting through their application process with them. And for the parents that have sat with them, this, it's not an easy process, obviously. But we know we also have had an increase this year in the percentage of students that have completed the FAFSA, which is great, which enables them to access dollars to go to college. And we're hearing back from many of our seniors already about their acceptance to prestigious universities. I wanted to give you one example that Dr. Baltasar Sabah shared with me from Mark Gomez and Antonio Garcia through our Ed Services Department. So we've all seen Michael Nubusi talk before, and I've sent you some of his videos. Michael has indicated he's been accepted to several UC campuses and private universities, as well as Ivy League campuses, including Brown University. He also had his app in with Harvard, and he's debating whether or not to put his name on the waitlist because he has so many other options and choices that might be worth him just sticking with one of those. So congratulations to him. I also want the community to understand that even through all these difficult challenges, our students have earned over $100 million in scholarship and grants over the last three years, which includes last year, over $34 million of grant and aid for students who finished their high school under difficult circumstances. So we do amazing things in our school district. As you know, our athletic programs have been very well managed through the season one sports that we offered. We weren't able to offer all of them just because of how all of the timing and mechanisms worked. We are on, onto season two now, and this will be the most sports we've had at the same time. So there's a lot of student athletes participating right now. I want to thank our athletic directors for their tireless work in organizing all of the protocols and COVID safety measures to keep kids and their coaches safe. We also know that with indoor sports, they are allowed to participate in the orange tier, but we have to give weekly testing for them. So last week was our first week that we tested all of our indoor sports, and that was very successful, and we'll, we'll continue to get better with that. The process we're using, it takes a sample of the students, they, they self-assess, they put their sample in a kit, the kits are mailed down to the Valencia lab, and within 24 to 30 hours, we get the results. We are a couple of weeks away from the 15-minute test, and so that takes a little training and some additional software components. But once that happens, we'll be ready to test student athletes or anybody else within 15 minutes. Also wanted to state that as we move towards reopening of our campuses, I want to encourage all of our media outlets to support messaging that supports providing parents with accurate information so that they can stay informed and make decisions in the best interest of their child. Just as a reminder, all school districts are doing their best to get children back to in-person learning to the extent possible, when feasible, and it looks different everywhere. So it's imperative right now that all forms of media... So it's imperative right now that all forms of media support the school districts and support the flow of factual information, especially during this time of quick changes. And for those media inquiries for our district, I just want to remind the outlets to contact Marcos Cabrera, and we will provide the time and space to get you that information. I agree with our trustees and our, our union leaders, our district staff, cabinet, site leadership. Everybody's been phenomenal throughout the pandemic. Moving forward, we will adapt, we will pick ourselves up again, we will overachieve like we always do, because the kids deserve nothing less. So I appreciate everybody's work. It will not be perfect when we start next week. It won't be perfect the next, next week after that, but we will give our effort to make sure we're providing the best services for kids. I also want to leave with just something simple, that our staff is, is out there working to get prepared to, once again, meet kids in classrooms in person and support kids in distance learning. And everybody has challenges. They are real challenges. They could be medical, they could be family medical, they could be childcare. And childcare doesn't mean I have an infant that I need to get a babysitter for. Childcare could mean I need to get my kid to school, and it's a different time than I have to go to work. So as we move forward, we want everybody to be compassionate with each other as we get back to school, because everybody will have some impacts. And I leave you with this for our staff as well, including members of the cabinet, President Vassler, President Vega, and our district leadership. You have to take care of yourself first as well, because you cannot pour from an empty cup. So keep that in mind, that we need to take care of ourselves as we move forward. So I will leave you with that today.
That was good, sir. Thank you. I forgot to mention that, you know, this will be the first of many in-person meetings that the board will have. If we expect for our students to go to school next week, then we need to be here in, you know, a meeting as a group. We can't expect any more or less. We, we have to be here. So hopefully, I don't know if we're going to, are we going to be here next time? I don't know. Maybe it'll be someplace else. Next, we'll go to action, action items.
I think you have individuals.
Oh, individuals, I'm sorry. I was too anxious there. Individuals desiring to address the board.
Yes, so I just, real quickly, trustee Rubio pointed out, which is well, well said. So we're moving to in-person meetings now, so public comments take place in person. So on the agenda for tonight, it says that, that those comments take place in person. So any of the emails that I've received for public comment, I will have Beatrice make sure she sends them all to you. If somebody in the future wants to attend and make public comment, we have our blue slips set up here at the door. And so people could come to the door, fill out a blue slip, make a public comment, and then they would exit the room after their public comment. So that will be the process we use for public comments moving forward.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Can I go to action now?
Yes, you can.
Action, action items. Number A, Resolution 21-61, Day of Teacher.
So moved.
We, I have trustee Rubio, motion, motion, and seconded by trustee Ocampo. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number B, Resolution 21-62, To Condemn Anti-Asian Hate Speech and Acts.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Sazie Jones, seconded by trustee Ocampo. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have amending resolution number 20-40, Restrictions of Facility Usage.
So just real quick before you take action, so we currently have a resolution that closes the facilities to outside agencies. Now that we have kids going back to school and we're opening up our facilities, this would still have limited closure to outside agencies, but would allow for the, the outside outdoor facilities to be used for recreational use sports.
Moved by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Padilla. Any discussion?
I just had a quick question.
Yes, sir.
So this is allowing us to, to let people use these outside facilities? Is that accurate?
Through our normal permit process, yes.
That's good. I'm, I'm good.
Anyone else?
That's, thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number D, Safe Reopening of Schools Plan.
So moved.
Moved, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Moved by trustee Rojas, seconded by trustee Ocampo. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. So we'll see everybody next week in school.
Yay!
I hope, I hope we do fine. We do well. I know we will. Information items. First Reading of Board Policy 5141.22- Infectious Diseases. Any questions or comments? Okay, then I'll go to number B. First Reading of Board Policy 6115- Ceremonies and Observances. Any questions or comments?
I just, I had a question just to follow up from an earlier email. So will we be determining whether or not we, whether or not the pledge is, is done in, you know, homeroom advisory? I think it was, used to be period four at Salinas High, whatever, whatever. I'm just wondering like what this, what, what will this, how will this impact, I guess, kids in the classroom?
So our current policy is that we do the flag salute as part of patriotic activities according to ed code.
Right.
So CSBA has recommended making the, the policy more generic and removing that exact language.
Got it.
But it's still in our administrative regulation.
Got it.
Which also has in there the language about how we fly flags at each of our buildings, et cetera. So we're keeping that in the regulation and just following the, the recommendation from CSBA to, to make it more generic, whereas a school board, you could make a decision to recognize other types of ceremonial symbology if you would like to as well.
Great, thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Okay. First, number C, First Reading of Board Policy 3551, Food Service Operations/Cafeteria Fund. Questions or comments? Okay. Number D, First Reading of Board Policy 3555, Nutrition Program Compliance. Questions or comments?
I do have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is a nutrition program compliance, right? I think my question is, is kind of a, what we are adopting here tonight, is it just to follow the level of, of requirement from the state? Just the, okay? Because I've been advocating for better menus, better food, and I'm hoping that hopefully this coming year, we can walk on that venue.
Trustee Ocampo, this addresses complaints, so it defines what complaints get filed to the California Department of Education, what complaints go to USDA, and what is handled and managed at the district level.
Okay. Ms. Aguiar, the reason why I'm approaching this is because I have received letters from South Salinas parents and East Salinas parents in complaining. And actually, last week, I just went into our internet and looked at the menus, what we're offering, and I'm amazed to see that within the same month after month after month, it's the same kind of a food, with the exception of one new dish on a monthly basis. And the concern that I'm getting in Salinas is that the parents are tired and the students are picking up the same grab-to-go bag with the same meal. So I do feel that it's about time to start looking into this, now that we're passing, you know, the, the, the stress of reopening of the school system. Because if you check out other districts, like the district that I checked is Mount Diablo in Concord, California, and you look at the menus, you'll be totally surprised at how the kids are eating healthier foods. And so we have, you know, all the agriculture around us, and I read in this, in this previous page, that we as a district should buy our produce locally, first of all grown in our community before reaching out, out of, out of, out of, out of the area. And so I talked to another food manager from another district in regards, and I was amazed to hear so much input about that. So I just wanted to.
Yeah, so.
The, the policy is more generic as it relates to nutritional programs. And what you're talking about, I think, it sounds like it's something very specific, that maybe we need, we, we might be able to legitimize it later?
Yeah, so trustee Ocampo has sent in a request.
Okay.
For the information, and Ms. Aguiar will get her the information and we'll schedule some time for the board to hear that. This, this policy is really about, you have to have a process in place to file complaints that goes all the way up to the U.S. Department of Agriculture. So that's what this is, and then we'll follow up with the concerns that trustee Ocampo has.
Yeah, what you're talking about is very specific, and what they're talking about in the policy is, is general.
Okay.
Let me go back where I was, let me see. D. I'm sorry.
I think you were on D.
D. Questions or comments?
No.
Okay. E. Quarter Report on Williams Uniform Complaints. Chapter, quarter number three.
Looks good.
Nothing?
No.
Any questions or comments? Very good, thank you. Am I out here? Safe, no. F, Facilities Project Planning Update. Questions or comments?
So let me.
Yes, sir.
Are we, is that, were you going to give us a presentation?
Yes, please, I would like to do that.
Okay, good. Yeah, I, I saw this, I just, yes.
President Tabera?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So I will go ahead and present the presentation. I have a short presentation for you all.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you. So today's update is regarding facilities project planning. And when we plan for facilities, we keep in mind enrollment projections, the type of classrooms that we currently have, and what are our needs? Do we need additional science classrooms, or what type of classrooms do we need? We also keep in mind the age of the facilities and the funds that are available for us to deliver the facilities that are needed for our students. So with that, we are going to start with enrollment projections. And as you can see, the year here at the very top, that is the beginning of the fiscal year. So for example, where you see the year 2020, that is for fiscal year 2020-21, meaning July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. And what I want to point out in this slide here is that in 2021, which is this coming school year, we start declining in enrollment. It's a small decline, but the projections show that we will be declining by 42 students this coming fiscal year. The following fiscal year will be declining by 102 students. The very last row, you'll see the cumulative number starting with 2020-21. So what I want to point out here is if you look at 2025, which would be school year 2025-26, we will have a cumulative decline of 910 students. Which is interesting is that if you look at years 2018, 19, and 20, we had an increase in enrollment of nearly 900 students, which is really interesting how the three years before, we increased by 900, but if we get to 2025, we have a decrease of 910 students. Now, the decrease in 2020-25, that's really about 400 students for middle and 500 for the high schools. I don't, I didn't include the enrollment projections by school site, but I'm more than happy to share that with you. It was also provided in, in the board packet in our last meeting. And what we do have now is that when we redid our boundaries due to the opening of Rancho San Juan, the intent was to make sure that we relieved enrollment at North Salinas, at all the schools really, right? But the majority of the students for Rancho San Juan really came, came from the North Salinas area and the Everett Alvarez area. So with Rancho San Juan, we're currently this school year at 1,200 students. In five years, we'll be at 1,800 students. So we have an increase of over 300 students. So we need to start planning for that. And in the presentation, you'll see what is being proposed for future planning with facilities. And of course, this is a proposed plan from administration to the board. However, please know that we are open for, for any changes or recommendations. So moving, yes. With the slide, yes. Do you have questions?
Can I ask a question on this?
Of course.
So even, even, you know, the numbers are going down, like you said, I was doing the calculation in my head with all the middle schools, and that's like maybe a class and a half, maybe, you said maybe about 50 students in the fifth, in the seventh, and another 50 on the eighth grade, at, at, at 400 for the, for the middle schools. It's not, it's not really a lot. Have these projections been bad, been faulty before? Have, have we had increases where these things say this, and in effect, we get, we get more kids? Or, or is this all based already like on our, on our kindergartners going into the feeder schools and the first graders and second graders, so on? Is that where it's?
Yes, so we use a demographer to provide us with these projections, and they take that into account. So they take into account the projections from all the elementary districts in our area that feed into our district, and it also takes new development and growth in the city and at the county level. So they communicate with both agencies to ensure that they have the latest information in order for them to be able to deliver this information to us. And I do want to report that last year, last year's numbers were very, very close. The projections to what our actual CBET enrollment or CalPAT enrollment was, was very, very close. I think they were off by 70 students. So with the district our size, that is, that is a very good report.
And even though the numbers are going down, it's, in, in the scheme of things, it's still a 15,000 students. It's just, you know, even it goes down, it, it's like a classroom or two. It's not really a lot over the, over all of our kids still.
Over the years, right?
Yeah, I mean, we, we're going from, from being overcrowded to not being as overcrowded, it seems like.
Correct, right.
You know? I mean, I mean, it's just still, you know, people say, oh, you're decreasing? No, we're, we're just, we're bulging with what we have. So, so, I mean, it'll make what, one or two rooms extra, maybe, right? Anyway, okay, I'm done.
What you're seeing is the, the, the change or the decline in enrollment in the elementary feeders that we have, we're now starting to see it hit us. So, and that's been pretty significant for them, 1,000 kids over four years' time. And if you look four years from now, the projection here is pretty close to 1,000 kids. So that makes sense. And, and you're right, it's spread out amongst all schools, so it won't feel significant. But in the grand scheme of things, one of the conversations is if we lose 500 or 600 middle school students, it creates space at their schools, and then we have a discussion about need for a middle school or not. So Anna will get to that as she, as she goes through the numbers.
Where did we get the enrollment projection information from again?
So we have a demographer called Decision Insight that provides us with these, with these projections.
Is it the same demographer that we had when Jimmy Erhart was the superintendent?
No, so that demographer we used when we redid our boundaries. This demographer focuses on school enrollment.
Because one of the things that kind of bothers me about these numbers is that we were told back during the term of Jimmy Erhart, when he was soup, that our numbers were going to go down. But guess what? They didn't go down. In fact, the numbers that I see right here up until, I think, 2023, they've always seemed to be consistently moving up or going up. And And, you know, I, I'm, I just, you know, I mean, I'm not gonna be around in, at that time, and the board, but I don't, I don't know, you know? Being from Salinas, and, and seeing the way my street has progressed, my area has progressed, I, I don't see a decrease in population. I'm beginning to see an increase in population, and so, I just, when I look at the numbers, I go, okay, well, that, ah, but from what I've seen, and what I've known, that I haven't seen a decrease, I've only seen an increase.
And Mr., President Tabera, you are correct. So, the demographer did report that our population has increased. Over the last five years, our population in Salinas has increased 3%. So, this takes in account only the, the school-age children in our district, but the population, yes, has increased in Salinas.
No, I, I hear you, I, and I see it, I'm just, you know, making a comment saying that, well, you know, kind of have hesitation on the numbers, but, you know, what do I know? I'm not a demographer. I'm only a social science major, sorry.
Wonderful. Okay, so moving on to the high school projects. And the reason why I'm listing only the high school projects here is because I am really focusing on the, on the Measure B. So, Measure B is the measure that was passed by the voters back in November 2014, and that measure was 128 million. We have a balance currently of 41.2 million in Measure B funds. So, the majority of those funds were used to build Rancho San Juan, that was 90 million. And, and then Prop 51, we received a total of 33 million from the state, and those funds came from submitting an application to the state when Prop 51 still had funds available. We went ahead and we submitted an application based on the new construction for Rancho San Juan. We were qualified, we were in line very early on, as soon as the measure passed, and we received those funds this, the last, this last summer, summer of 2020. So, luckily for us, we have an additional 33.0 million dollars to continue to do this. And as we modernize projects, I just want to let you know that our, most of our school sites are eligible for modernization dollars. We have to wait for, of course, for the state to pass a bond, but as soon as, as we're completing some of the projects that are on this list, we will continue to do the same. So, for example, for Dolores Huerta, as soon as our, our, the plans were approved by the California Department of Education and by DSA, we submitted an application to, to CDE, and that application has been approved, which means that as soon as another state bond is approved and passed, we will be in line for those funds, so we can receive additional funds. And we will continue to do that as we modernize our facilities. Currently, right now, just, and I can give you the breakdown, I didn't bring that to you, but just off the top of my head, currently, we are eligible for about 59 million dollars of modernization funds. Meaning that as we complete these projects, we'll continue to do the same and get in line so that when there are funds available, we can make sure that we are guaranteed those funds, so we can do more for our facilities. So, that's Prop 51, 33.3 million. And when Measure B passed, we knew at that time that 128 million dollars was not going to be enough to deliver those projects that were on the list for the five, for the five schools. So, at that time, the board committed to, to transfer 13 million dollars from the General Fund Unrestricted to the Special Reserve Fund, and set those funds aside so that we can deliver a, a project for the existing high schools at that time. So, we did the Montoro, right? We went ahead, through your approval, we built the Child Development and Multipurpose Room, that was about 5 million dollars. And thus, those funds came out of the Special Reserve. So, now we only, we have 8.3 million dollars available in Special Reserve that are set aside to deliver those projects. So, currently, cash on hand, meaning that those are funds that we have to date in our general ledger, in our, in our, at the county treasures under Salinas Unit High School District, for the purposes of delivering construction projects. That's a total of 83 million dollars. The project list for Measure B was for us to deliver North Salinas High School, a two-story classroom building. We're gonna demo some of those old portables that are 40 or maybe a little bit older, years old. At Alisal High School, the same, two-story classroom building. Rancho San Juan, we still need to complete their stadium project. And at the next slide, I'm gonna go ahead and share with you what is included in that 7.5 million dollars. Salinas High School, a two-story classroom building. And at Everett Alvarez, the Performing Arts Center, meaning that we would get rid of some of those portables that are in the 800s, and that's where the Performing Arts Center would be located. So, that alone with the, with today's estimates, that's a total of 96.4 million dollars. So, the difference, we're short 13.3 million dollars. And, and so for now, the recommendation is that these projects that are listed are extremely needed at our, at our schools, at our high schools, extremely needed. Meaning that we are proposing that we fund that 13-point million out of Measure W, which was the bond that just passed in November of 2020, for 140 million, and we'll all go into and show you what that looks like on a different slide. Okay? So, moving-
Can I ask, when, when do we anticipate that those projects might begin? I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry?
When might the projects begin?
So, so the projects will begin as early as next year. For the two-story classroom buildings, we're under design now for North Salinas and Alisal. And Rancho San Juan, we are actually very close to bringing a bid to you, and I'm hoping that it comes to you at the next board meeting, so that we can start construction in May.
Okay.
Can I ask a-
Yes, ma'am.
In order to apply some of the Measure W funds, Anna, do you need, would we need to vote on that? Do you need, just need direction? What's the process to, to approve that?
So, the process that we normally have, we would normally put in place is to have an approved project list from the board.
Okay.
And because when we, when that measure was approved, we went ahead and we listed additional classrooms, so everything that we're doing here that you have in front of you also qualifies under Measure W.
Okay, great.
And tonight, this is an info item, so the idea would be, next meeting, we'd bring you something for action.
Thank you. So, the Rancho San Juan High School Stadium Project. So, as you can see, and this is really for me to just show you what's included, and it's color-coded to make it easy on the eye, so that you can see what the needs are at, at this, at the stadium. So, the pre-construction cost that's included, that's the work that's being done now, right? For us to work with the, with the contractor, the general contractor, so that we can develop, plan, he's working very closely with the architects, so that we can go ahead and finalize those plans, and go out and they get bids. This is under the lease-leaseback method that was approved by the board, and we're getting very close. Like I said, our plan is to bring you the, the agreement at this, at this, at the next board meeting. So, option, under option one, you'll see that we also included the baseball netting for the, for the varsity baseball field. We also included a greenhouse, so this project will actually be multi-funded. We will be receiving funds from the CTEIG grant to deliver the greenhouse, so taking advantage to put it all in one project, which makes more sense because we have the contractor along with, when they do the site work, you already have them out there working on that, so it just makes a lot more sense to go ahead and plan, since it's in that same area, to go ahead and plan, and add as much as possible to this project. It also includes the greenhouse, the press box, and the panels. This stadium will have a lighting system, meaning that they will be able to have night games, just like we do at most of our high schools. The only high school that doesn't have lighting at this time i- is North Salinas High School, and we'll talk about that in another slide, and, and, and a proposed plan. And then it also includes all the site work, meaning that it includes all the electrical, the paving, and fencing. So, that's everything that you see in the, in the purple in front of you. The option two, which is Building E, at the very top, you see a, a square, and it's, it's E, that's Building E, and that is our concession stands, along with the restroom, with the restroom building, just like all our stadium staff currently. They all have a restroom buildings and the concession stand. And it also includes a canopy at the entrance, right when you come in. And then option three includes a synthetic track and field sports, and it includes all the paving and the fencing. So, so this is really important. So, this here is an estimated budget of 7.5 million, but this will deliver Rancho San, and, and provide Rancho San Juan students with equal access that we are, that we are currently providing to our others, to our students at the other high schools. And that's the reason why we're bringing this recommendation to you, is to deliver the facilities so that it's equal. The only thing, as I mentioned earlier, is the lighting for North Salinas High School. Do we have any questions?
Trustee, President Tabera?
I'm sorry. Uh, who is, right?
Anna, I would like to ask, so does option one, two, and three, all three options will cost 7.5? Or we have to pick one option, each option costs 7.5?
Right. So, so for example, option one is a cost of 4.1 million dollars.
Oh, okay.
And then option two is 1.6, and, and then the last option was, option three is 1.2 million. And this includes the, in reality, this is all the construction part of it, which is about 6.9 million dollars, and that also includes the construction fees.
So, then we don't have to choose one option, we can get all three?
Correct, and that's the recommendation that we're coming, the reason why we went ahead-
Oh, yeah, and we want all three.
And the reason why we did this in different options is because if, say, for example, the funds were not available-
Oh, okay.
-it just makes sense for us to say, okay, let's go ahead and do option one, which would be our base bid, and then we can bring the other two as alternates, right? And then at that point, you would have to decide, do you want Building E with, which is the snack bar and the restroom building, or would you prefer the synthetic track?
Okay.
Right, you would have to make that cho, that decision, which is a difficult decision, and the administration is recommending that the board approve a full stadium for Rancho San Juan.
Sandra, the interest you brought up-
After looking at the numbers that you are providing us, for us tonight, I guess my question, Anna, is that we barely passed Measure W for 140 million dollars, and according to my knowledge, that bond was gonna be used mainly in the construction of the middle school, Dolores Huerta, on Hemingway and Independence Road. So, we're already spending 13 millions out of that budget, right? And we're left with 127,000 millions plus. My second question will be, when are we expecting to start up the next middle school? And if what we have left would be enough money to complete the middle school?
Yes, thank you for the question.
Yeah, let's, let's let her get through the next few slides, because it's in there.
Yes, thank you.
As, as we get further into the presentation, it's in there.
I didn't hear you well, can you repeat that question?
Yeah, so let, let's let Ms. Aguiar get through a couple more slides, and then we can talk about all of the projects, which includes the middle school, and how that is tallied up in the new bond, the W, Measure W bond. So, let's get it through a couple more slides.
Thank you, Mr. Burns, and I think my question was, because before we, we were finishing Rancho San Juan, we had to borrow funds for 5 million to complete Rancho San Juan, remember? Do you remember that, Anna?
That we had to borrow 5 million?
Before we finished building Rancho San Juan High School.
Yeah, we put like 13.
The 13, oh, the 13 million dollars?
It was like 13.
So, that was money that the board had dedicated and assigned to complete the Measure B projects.
So, I just like concern you that, that, you know, I just need, I just need us to be careful in how much we spend, so we don't run deficit when we hit the opening of the middle school.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Let's, let's get there, because that's one of our big conversations we need to have, is the cost of Dolores Huerta, and the impact on the other projects. So, we'll get there and we'll talk about that.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, Anna, looking at the cost here, Rancho San Juan Stadium Project is 7.5 million. We had talked about this is gonna be a leaseback project, so the 7.5, that's how much it's gonna cost us to lease it for X amount of years?
So, no, the lease-leaseback is just a method that we use for delivering the project. However, it'll be owned by the district. So, we're not leasing, this is, the, the property and the stadium, everything will continue to be owned by Salinas Unit High School District.
But under the leaseback, contractor will build it, and then they'll lease it to, we'll lease it to them, and then they'll lease it back to us?
It's, it's a method that they use to say, while you're building it, you're really leasing it from us, but then we, once they're done and it's completed, it gets signed back over to the district. It's only during the construction phase.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You don't have any grandstands on the visitor's side?
We don't at this time, we do not, so what we will do is we will be moving the current stands that are there now, we will be moving those over to the visitor's side.
Okay, and then, if I said correct, is how many people will fit in the home site stands?
1,500.
Wow. That's good. Wow.
All right, moving on. Okay, so Measure M, this is the middle school bond, and this measure passed back in 2002. We currently have a total of 4, 4.1 million dollars, and the remaining authorization is 8.5, meaning that we have a total available of 12.6 million for, for middle school projects. And on the project list that we had discussed is to add or modernize existing classrooms at the middle schools, and also the Dolores Huerta Middle School, the construction of that. Obviously, we don't have enough funds currently to build the school, and yes, trustee Ocampo, we had added that on our list of Measure W projects. So, let me get there now. So, Measure W, the bond was 140 million. As I discussed earlier, the balance from the Measure B project list is 13.3 million. Rancho San Juan, we need to start planning for additional classrooms. The school was built for 1,500 students, and as I mentioned earlier, we will be getting close to 1,900. Next year will be at, I believe, 1,500, so we need to start planning the additional classrooms. In fact, as you saw on the agenda, we will be planning for temporary portables this coming summer to accommodate the growth next school year. And also, one of the projects that is strongly being recommended is a modernization of North Salinas High School. A few years back, I believe it was back in 2006 or '07, we modernized Alisal High School, similar layout, and North Salinas High School is in need of modernizing the main building, meaning that we would be modernizing some of the underground utilities, some of the, the roofs and ceilings, walls, so structurally, we would be doing major work at North Salinas High School. And then the other project for North Salinas High School is improving their stadium. They currently don't hold any of their, for example, like football games there, they don't have adequate seating, and they don't have stadium lights. So, the recommendation would be to also modernize their stadium to provide them with, with, with that. So, totaling the projects that are listed here is a total of 61.5 million, meaning that the balance for Measure W at this time, if the projects listed were approved, is a total of 78.4 million. This project list, this is a Measure W project list that was reviewed and discussed. At that time, we knew we didn't have enough funds in the bond to deliver all the projects that are listed here. This project list is over 204 million dollars, because some of the projects that are listed here, you'll see that they show as pending estimates, meaning that we didn't have those included in the 2.4 million. in the 2.4 million and the bond was for 140 million. So I know our superintendent has discussed and has had multiple conversations with you in regards to the construction of Dolores Huerta. We have talked about workforce housing. We reviewed recently the facility master plan for ROP. And of course, you know, the list goes on. This list is organized and listed by school site. And this is really the end of my presentation. I just really wanted you to take a look at all the funds that were available and all the projects that are pending.
Questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to thank the district. That's one of the requests I had put in a while back ago, lights for North Salinas because that's the only high school that doesn't have any lights for their night games. And then also, I'm not sure if under modernization, you can use that money for maybe sprinkler system in the schools, so they're pretty outdated and some need to be fixed.
And the sprinkler system, that is a repair. We do have our, on top of this funding that goes into our facilities, we also have a $6 million budget for restricted routine maintenance, meaning that those funds are to be used to maintain our schools. So something like that, replacement of anything that has to do with any sprinklers would be included in that budget. And I will make a note of that, trustee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to share information. When I visited Ever Alvarez High School with our other trustee, who's not here no more, we find out that the cameras, okay, some of them are not implemented in the back patio. So there's a lot of kids hanging around in that area. I don't know if you can please, you know, check that with the administration and make sure that they're set the way that they need to be for security reasons.
Definitely. Thank you, Trustee Ocampo, I appreciate that. For your information, we are working and evaluating the systems at all our school sites. The system is, you know, we have outgrown, right? Because we've extended and added and of course had increase in enrollment. So we are evaluating all our cameras district wide.
And the reason why I'm giving you that info because not just we find out, but also some of the campus supervisors were telling us that, so.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So just real quickly, there's a lot on this page. So we don't have 204 million, so we're going to have to sharpen our pencil. And as a group, decide what are some of the priorities? So Ms. Aguiar, on the previous slide, talked about some priorities that add up to 78 million, which means we only have 50 million or so, 60 million or so. I'm sorry, it's late, my math is off.
78 million?
So we have 78 million left and you have some big ticket items on the next list. So you have Dolores Huerta, which is 30 million plus, it's about a 45 to 48 million dollar build. So if we use the 13 million from what we already have, we would have to come up with another 35 million roughly out of measure W to build the middle school. You also have in there potential for workforce housing that we've talked about, right? So it may not be a complete $20 million project, it might be a little less, depending on how we put the finances together for that. But that's been a priority discussion at the board level as well. And we're going to have to look at some of the other areas. The other big ticket item on here is the ROP Center. So we've talked about doing some modernization at the ROP Center. We had a study done, we had architects draw this up, it came back at 65 million, probably much, much more than any of us anticipated. So we're going to have to look at putting a pencil to some of these projects and maybe scaling some back so we can get whatever priorities the board thinks we need to have moving forward. Because you only have 78 million and you, taking out Anna's, some of the projects that are duplicated here, you know, there's quite a bit on here that just won't get accomplished with this bond.
Mr. Burns, this is precisely why I share my information. I think the cameras for security in campuses, to me, is a priority.
Yeah, and we have a different budget for that. That's not from measure W.
That's what I need to hear.
Yeah.
Okay, no, I was just going to say, you know what, I always say the glass is half full here. It's a lot of good stuff we're going to do, even if we knock some stuff out. Oh, it's a lot of good stuff we're going to do. So no, I, you know, we all have a wish list, I have a wish list of everything, but I'm looking at a lot of stuff that can be done and this is going to be good, you know, some of these potential things. It's good, that's all. I, you know, I'm happy that, you know, I wish you could do everything like anything else. I mean, I think about that at my house too, I wish you could do everything, but, you know, we got it good, we got it good here. You know, I think that's good and the fact that the community passed it without any work, that is amazing to me, that the people took, you know.
I did some work.
You know, it wasn't a lot of work.
Yeah, true.
Not campaigning, not door to door.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, the people did, so that's good, that's all I have to say.
Yeah.
And I just have a question and it's something that we can all ponder over the next couple of weeks. With the numbers that you shared regarding declining enrollment over projected over the next decade, and this is not a new conversation, we've talked before about our feeder districts gradually declining. It's difficult to justify building a middle school that we may not need, but yet I know we have the land and it's named and it's, this vision is so hard to let go of. And really, quite frankly, that was before my time, but I know there's so much, you know, pride in wanting to see that happen. So I'm just wondering, this is really for all of us, is there something else that could be done with that to honor the land and the name that may be something that we need?
And we can, I mean, legally, we would have to, of course, go through that, right? If we wanted to repurpose the land, we would have to go through, of course, some legal activities, but it's something that can definitely be done. In the meantime, while, you know, the discussion happens here with the board and the superintendent, we're continuing to lease that as farmland to the farmers. So that does continue so that we can continue to generate revenue. Revenue that we are currently collecting is going into a special fund and it's to be used for the construction of the new middle school. But that too, again, like I said, it could be re, right, not repurposed, but it could be reallocated, right, to whatever project we decide to move forward with.
Yeah, so one of the thoughts would be that we bring you back next meeting, a priority list within the budget that's remaining, that has Dolores Huerta School in it, and then a priority list with it not in it. So you can kind of see what would be in either one. We, your thinking isn't off base in that the enrollment doesn't necessarily justify needing a school. However, if we built a school, we could do some things to make sure the enrollment is there. So it's really just a matter of deciding, how do you want to use the dollars? And if it's 30, if it's, you know, 35 million from measure W, that's 35 million less and we would have to take a pencil to things like maybe the ROP Center is a $20 million remodel instead of 65. Maybe we take out the aquatic center at Salinas High because there's really nowhere to put it right now. Maybe we take out, you know, some of those kinds of longer term projects. So let us maybe put a pencil to paper on this and send you, you know, for next session, bring you a couple of different ways to look at that 78 million.
Maybe years ago, when I first got on the board, one of the first things that was really kind of difficult as a board member was, we had just opened up La Paz Middle School. And there was three, there were three Latino, three Mexican Americans on the board, myself, Sandra and another fellow, Mr. Gonzalez, who's no longer on the board. And the three of us had proposed that La Paz be, not be La Paz, because that didn't come out to the very end, out of kind of like nowhere, but we had suggested Dolores Huerta as the naming of that school because it seemed appropriate since it was right next door to Caesar Chavez. Okay. But if you take a look at the Salinas General Plan, not the one that includes Rancho San Juan, but the general plan part that refers to, I think, I want to say Natividad to Williams, Beronda, back up to the foothills, that is also part of the Salinas General Plan. And there are homes that are also going to be built, not, you know, in the next five years, but probably another 10 or 15 years. And that whole area is going to be built up. And that whole area is going to have houses and that whole area is going to have families and that whole area is going to have students that are going to need to go to school. And we're not talking about, well, what are we going to do in five years? We're talking about what we're going to be doing in the future, in 10 years, because it's going to take a while for us to get to that point. And so it's very difficult for me, having gone through the experience with Sandra when we were on the board many years back, of being, I would only call it being burned by other board members and being disappointed by the fact that it was never named as we felt it was most appropriately, should have been named, that ultimately in the end, we would get to see a new school. And, you know, I know that that entire area is going to be built up because I was on the plan with Mayor Donahue when he, before he was the mayor, and we drew up that idea. And it included not just one middle school, I think it also included a high school and two or three elementary schools to accommodate all the people that are going to be living in that area that is now hills and some fields. So I would hope that we would, you know, keep it in, let's just keep it in mind, you know. What I wanted to ask was another question. That's what happens to me when I wait, I forget what I'm going to ask. I should probably write it down.
You should.
I know, it was pretty good too. Yeah, it was a really good one too. But it'll probably come to me when I'm done, my pasta freeze, you know, getting that soda or something, but, oh. Yeah, it'll come to me later. But, you know, as far as the Huerta School and considering, oh, I know what it was, ROP. ROP is Regional Opportunity Program, correct? Something to that effect?
Yes.
Okay. And don't we have other school districts that send students to that particular location?
Not really.
Well, could we?
Well, they're not busing kids to that location.
Well, I was thinking, several years back, we were trying to think of a way to expand ROP to include other occupations. And we were, I think it was, it was, it might have been, I don't know if it was Tim or who it was that took us, but we went to Santa Clara and we took a look at their ROP Center there. And it was really interesting because that center was not, it wasn't the size of what we have, it was like twice the size. And it offered construction, technology, plumbing, electrical, carpentry, I mean, it offered culinary arts, it offered a lot of, there was some computer programming, building of learning how to program, learning the language. I mean, it just was like, we walked out and we were like totally shocked by what we had seen. And really, that, the whole facility was funded by all the different school districts that sent students there. And I, you know, like, I don't know if that's something that we could think about or try to beef up, but maybe we can, in the future, do something like that. That would be a way for us to get some buy-in from other school districts.
Yeah, I don't think they will pay millions of dollars to build the place.
Well, how about thousands?
They're not sending kids there. So what I'll say is that if you look at what's on here, if you wanted to build ROP and Dolores Huerta, you don't have enough money to do those two.
No.
Right, by themselves.
No.
So what I'm thinking more along the lines of, is I met with board leadership, what, back in January, and we met with Ron Cheshire not too long after that. And we talked about prioritizing the trades. So when we look at the ROP Center, we go back through that design plan and we look at what are the buildings that represent the trades? And could we figure out how to fund those and some of the other pieces of it, we put aside for later time? So for instance, one of the things in that plan, if you recall, is like a 12 or 14 million dollar culinary center. So it'd be great to have that, but that doesn't meet having a pathway in the trades, right? So you could potentially say, okay, let's have a scale down, remodel it, maybe we do 4 million instead of 12, right? So I think we need to look at those projects through that lens of what would accomplish some of our priorities, but being able to save dollars so that we can be able to meet some of the other needs we have as well. So with that, you know, is, the discussion about Dolores Huerta is really, enrollment wise, we probably don't need the school immediately, right? We may down the road, Philip is correct, trustee Tabera is correct, as they expand north towards the hills, there's going to be more development. So we may need it down the road to serve the purpose of being a school. So, and we can talk about, like I said, I think the best thing is let us pencil this out a little bit and figure out, you know, what are some things on here that, this was the wish list.
Yeah.
Okay? So we went to every school site, right? The people that did the study, they got the wish list. Well, now it's time to take things off the wish list because we don't have dollars for everything. And then I can bring you back, here's what that would look like with using 30 million to do more, or here's what it would look like if we did have the 30 million in it, just so you can kind of see the difference. And then you can kind of debate it from there, what you want to do.
Yeah, because the board will be composed, I would think it will be composed of other people. And those other people may have daughters or sons that are students that are in elementary or middle school or high school. And maybe, you know, in the future, if we do have that on the books, maybe they can decide what they would like to see that school be or see something like that be. I know that there's a lot that we would want to do, you know, God, there are so many things we could do for our students, but there's only so much time and there's only so much money. And, you know, we may not be here, some of us may not be here in 10 years, some of us may not be on the school board, some of us may be on the council or, I don't know, somewhere else, I don't know. But it's always good to have that, at least have some sort of vision for later on, you know? I mean, and I think we do, we should have that discussion later on about what we would like to see happen. Because I'm, you know, I keep getting bugged about people from the living North High area that are wanting to, they're going to see changes being made to the stadium and we're going to see those classrooms. So I don't know.
It's coming, so all of that's here. And a part of it's not part of this budget, right? The new classroom buildings that Anna talked about are in the other bond.
Yeah.
So those are going to be funded and they're in design right now, so those will happen. I think for North Salinas High School, the equity pieces, adding the lights, I think we do that.
That's hard.
Because if we're going to put lights at Rancho San Juan, it's fair that we do that at North Salinas High School.
Been waiting too long.
Right. So, and there's some code pieces that we'll have to work out.
City code.
That's a little different where it's built, it's a little different than other schools because of the apartment complexes, et cetera. So we'll have to do some work with the city on code to put those lights up, but that would cover the cost of it. So let us pencil some out. So now you kind of seen the whole list and then we'll do some debating on it next session.
The thing that we have to our advantage is that the public, I think in general, I'm not sure about, you know, certain parts of town, but I think in general, most people have a lot of confidence in us to do the right thing.
Sure.
And if they're willing to, if people are willing to vote on a bond when there's very little movement because of COVID and support us in that way, you know, I think people have a lot of confidence in our board and to do the right thing. And so that's why I say, later on, we have the future. I mean, the future is, what are we going to do for these young people, you know, that live in this town? So I'll leave it there, we're later. Consent. Any questions or comments regarding consent?
So move on consent.
We have a motion on the floor and a second by trustee Rubio. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor of the motion to approve consent, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good, thank you. I have my last page. And I think we have, let me see. Future agenda items, reference, agenda master plan and guide.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Two questions, but they're related. Do we have to formally, if we decide to do in-person graduations of some sort, do we have to take action on that? Or is that something that the metrics will dictate?
Yeah, you do not have to take action on that. We're already in the planning. Dr. Baltazar Sabaz is meeting with activities directors and principals to begin that planning process.
Okay.
The variation depends on the metric. So if the metric is orange, they can put 33% of their, they can fill the stadium to 33%.
Okay.
And there's a list of guidelines from the CDHP, PH, and...
I knew what you meant.
And we don't have a lot of leeway with those things. So how many students can be there at the same time? How many adults? How many tickets they get? They will all be based on the total number of people and what tier, colored tier we're in. If something happened, we moved to red, we would move into the 25% range. We moved to yellow, I think it goes to 50%. There's some language in there about if everybody has been vaccinated and everybody can prove that they had a COVID test within three days, you can move those up. That's not going to be possible for us to be able to track that and make sure everybody's safe. So schools are already working on those components.
Okay.
We're also looking at what are some best practices from last year in terms of, could we incorporate some virtual things as well, some speeches or recognition so that the actual ceremonies are a little bit quicker? And because there is a requirement in those ceremonies that if you have more than one session, you have to have a two-hour break between them. So that makes it a little challenging for the larger schools. But the other option, too, that I know Dr. Baltazar Sabaz talked with activities directors about is renting Rabo Bank because it holds a lot more people. And that's where North Salinas graduates and Harden promotes, they're going to promote there. So if other sites wanted to access that, they could hold more. Potentially Alvarez and North High could probably get everything done in one ceremony. The larger schools might just take two. So we're working on those components, and we'll do some communication out to senior parents soon. So...
Can you all be coming back with a report for the boards at some near future date, right?
Yeah, we can put that as an agenda item in the future. It's not an action item.
Yeah, that was my, I just, as, you know, it's so hard to stay focused on what we're doing because it's so important and so consuming, but then right around the corner, there's something else that's really important that is happening like the next day. You all know what I'm talking about. And my other question is similar. Do we have to take action on returning fully in person in the fall? And if so, when would we do that?
So we would probably look at that, once we get off the ground here with hybrid and see how things go, we can bring that back to you before the summer.
Okay.
So that teachers and staff and parents would know before the summer. The priority is that we would go back to full in-person instruction in the fall. Obviously, it's all predicated on the virus.
Variance.
Right, so...
And all that good stuff, yeah.
Yeah, we can definitely bring that before summer.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Future board meetings, one will be the 27th of this month, and the other will be May 11th of May, well, May 11th. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Right.
Moved by trustee Campo, seconded by trustee Rubio. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. See you guys on the 27th.